All right, good evening and welcome to the Beaumont City Council Closed Session of September 16th, 2025. I will call this meeting to order at 5 o'clock PM. Nicole, can I get a roll call please?
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
And Mayor Proton Voight.
Here.
Mayor Lara stated he was absent this evening.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to public comments. This meeting will be conducted open, excuse me, open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. Do we have any public comments for closed session?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
All righty, and city attorney, can we please get a readout for the items for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Proton Voight. The council will adjourn to closed session to consider its items B1 through B5 as set forth on the closed session agenda. B1 is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, City of Beaumont versus Caesar Emilio Perez Aguilar. And the Riverside County case number is on the agenda itself. B2, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property is 105 West Sixth Street. The agency negotiator is the city manager Elizabeth Gibbs, our designee. The negotiating parties are the City of Beaumont and James Ferduwe. And under negotiation is price and terms. With respect to B3, it's conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraphs two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9 of the government code, one case. B4 is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to 54957, the title is city manager. And finally, B5 is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 94, I'm sorry, 54957.6. The agency designative representative is Mayor Lara and Mayor Proton Voight. The unrepresented employee is city manager. That concludes my closed session report at this time.
All right, thank you very much, and we will adjourn to closed session at 5:03.
All righty, good evening and welcome to the regular session of the Beaumont City Council meeting on September 16th, 2025. I will call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Nicole, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
All righty, and can we get a report out from our closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Voit. With respect to items B1 through B5 on the closed session agenda, there is no action to report on any of the items considered by the city council in closed session. That concludes my report.
All righty, great, thank you. And we will start our day off with the invocation from Pastor Ron Dupree, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Martinez. If you could please stand with me.
Before I pray, just want to say sorry, I'm gonna have to run right for this. As you can see, I broke my elbow, but, and I have an occupational therapist waiting for me at home. So, but I'm glad to be here and thank you for the privilege. Let us bow our heads. Holy Father, we want to pray that your spirit indeed will bless this council meeting this evening. We, as members of the city, are grateful for everything that they do, how they seek by your grace to be civic leaders. That can be a great blessing to everyone. So I pray that your spirit will guide this meeting, that everything said will be in harmony with principles of justice, righteousness, and be a blessing to everyone. We pray these things not because we are worthy, but in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready? Begin.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? All righty, I believe, any conflicts of interest?
Mayor Protem, I will be recusing myself on J2, as my husband has previously done business with the Park District in the last 12 months.
Okay, excellent. All righty, then we will move down to, it looks like no announcements or recognition, so we will move down to our public comment period for items not on the agenda. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There's a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Nicole, do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, we have one in person. Gabriel Benavides.
Hello, good evening, councilmembers. I wrote something up here real quick so that that way I stay focused, okay? So, thank you so much for being here. Press any of these? Okay, good. Well, my name is Gabriel Benavides, and I've been a Beaumont resident for almost 10 years. And I'm currently facilitating a faith-based, Christ-based recovery program called Celebrate Recovery for almost three years at the Chantney Center here in Beaumont on Wednesday nights from 6:30 to 8:30. And I myself have been in recovery for almost 20 years, and I know all too well the harmful and negative impact that addiction can have on individuals and on their families. And I don't feel like I need to ramble on about statistics to anyone this evening, because I'm pretty sure we're all aware of how alcohol, narcotics, and other addictions can negatively impact communities and impact families and the detriments that come along with that. We don't believe that our program is the solution to everyone's addiction problem, but rather, it's a place where people can come and find acceptance, understanding, love, and support on their own individual recovery journey. And the unfortunate thing is that most recovery groups operate independently, obviously anonymously, without networking with other groups, without networking with other organizations or churches. And the truth is, we want to change that. We want to let people know that recovery is possible, that hope is possible, that it's not just an individual thing, but it's a community thing, it's a city thing, and we have an authentic love for our city. And, you know, we serve people from all sorts of different backgrounds, social classes, economic, and even religious. People come in, and although they may have another faith, they are still open to our principles and values that we teach, and we've seen firsthand the success of that. My wife helps their spouses in that recovery journey as well, too. And so what we're basically here to do is to let you know that we're in the community, we're here to serve, we're here to give back, because we spent so many years taking, we want to give back. And we hope that with your help, you can teach us how to do that, or maybe open doors and avenues by which we can be of better service to our city and to Banning and Calamasa and Yucaypa and everywhere around. So with that, I'd just like to thank you for hearing me out, and I hope you all have a good evening. And if there's any way that I can leave some information about who we are along with the business card, if I'm able to do that tonight, I'd be more than happy to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benavides, and for all that you do. Nicole grabbed that information from you, and we appreciate your willingness, and thank you for being in the community and all you do.
Thank you.
Benny, do we have any callers on the line? Benny, can you hear us? Do we have any callers on the line? I'll check with him and see.
Okay, check and come back. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar is taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion this evening? All righty, Nicole, do you know if we have any public comment on any consent cal- Alrighty, Nicole, do you know if we have any public comment on any consent calendar items?
I have no written requests. I'm checking with Benny to see if we have audio check. Benny, can you hear us? Do we have any callers on the line? I'll send IT over to him.
Okay, very good. We will, do you want to wait, or should we cycle back?
No callers.
Oh, there we are. Very good. Alright, thank you.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Alrighty, and I'm not the mayor, but the Mayor Protem, and I will call for the roll call, please.
Wow.
Not yet. Not yet.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yes. Alrighty, we will move on to item H, our youth council report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. So we, I believe we had a student, but he might have had to have stepped down, or he might have left early. Might have been too late.
He had to leave.
Yeah, to leave, okay. So I'll just go ahead and do a quick, brief report. So we had our first meeting, and it went really well. We had, I believe, 20 students overall. And we were, we introduced Gus and Elizabeth, and they're very well motivated. And I have good, good feelings for the group. They were going to elect officers next meeting. We're going to talk about goals and objectives, and we're going to discuss where we left off last year and how we want to proceed, or what we want to proceed with this year. So, good, and we'll definitely give you a follow-up on the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Such a good turnout again for this year, so wonderful. Alright, it looks like we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our action items. And we will start with item J1.
Mayor Protem, if there are no comments from the public or from the council, I'd like to move to approve items J1, J2, and J3.
Alright, let me see if we have any public comment on any of those items.
I have no written request. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I'll second that. And I don't have any comments.
Alright, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yes.
Alright, well, we're just going to make a quick movement at this meeting. Thank you, Tom, for being here. Alrighty, we're going to move on to item J4, Purple Heart License Plate Holder Designation and Parking Spaces. We will get a staff report from Mr. Stephen Jones.
Good evening, madam, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. Stephen Jones with Community Development here to present the pilot program for Purple Heart License Plate Holders within the city of Beaumont. During this presentation, your council heard background, potential key program features, and next steps that support the recommendation action. At the direction of your council in July, staff presented an item before the Economic Development Committee and received feedback to help conceptualize possible components of a program. Based on that feedback, it was determined that the appropriate way to encourage participation was through voluntary action, through community partnerships, community city recognition, and business promotion in partnership with the Economic Development staff. The next steps, if authorized, would be to draft a framework to include thresholds and locations, and preferred incentives like website promotion and recognition at city events, and engage volunteers, community groups, business owners, and major landowners to receive input and feedback prior to launch. So again, during this presentation, the council heard background, including Economic Development Committee Participation Direction, potential key program features, and the support that recommends action to authorize development and launch of a program to honor combat wounded veterans in Beaumont. Thank you. This concludes staff presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written request. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Alright, we'll see no public comment. I will open it up to council discussion. It looks like, Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a quick comment, just to say, I'm so honored and proud of the city staff and city council for all the work that they've done over the past few years to support our veterans, and I think this is a great idea and in full support of it.
And Councilmember White?
Yeah, can you elaborate a little bit more on what kind of pilot program you're looking at? Because we already have designated spots. If you could just sort of expand on...
Sure. The designated spots right now consist of city facilities and state where there are 25 or more spaces. So a potential program could look at the commercial center along Highland Springs, for example, and say that that center, when there are new, or even existing businesses that propose to provide additional parking, maybe what they already do is there, but to add to that, then we could honor them in some way to promote their business on the website, or again, recognize them at city events. But right now, the location is open, so we would actually reach out to the veterans groups, community groups, and perhaps business owners to say, what's the best location? And we could start this program and see what type of participation we could get and what type of impact it would have.
And are we looking at the idea for future developments? We make it part of a requirement, a development agreement?
I think the direction we've gotten so far is that it's probably best to keep it voluntary and just to, again, incentivize, if at all possible, with different things that the city could do to incentivize.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
And Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I just want to comment. So we did have a pretty good discussion at the EDC on it, and I think the voluntary approach was the unanimous sound from the group. The only thing I want to question is, when we talk about partnering with an organization and stuff, we had a concern, because we talked about the group that was getting the signs at one time is no longer available, and the signs aren't available from them. So I'm assuming that if, as you go through this pilot program, you're gathering, okay, where would the signs come from, and how would you get them out, and so forth, as a part of a, so that we have a nice plan.
Correct. I believe our veterans group would be a good resource to start with. If not them specifically, they could probably direct us to the appropriate parties.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, too, was part of that conversation that we had at the Economic Development Committee, and it was definitely widely agreed upon that this would be a voluntary program. One thing I just thought as direction back from my perspective, we do have Veterans Day coming up, so that could be an opportunity with our Veterans Day event to roll this out when we're kind of looking at it, if you can mobilize it that quick, you know, and maybe find that event as a way to do that. That was just kind of some of my discussion there, so. We have a motion?
Oh, there's a resolution. Good. You're a veteran. I would be honored if you would do it.
Alright, alright, Mr. Martinez, thank you. So I move that we waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the City Council, the City of Beaumont, California, endorsing the launch and promotion of a voluntary pilot Purple Heart License Plate Parking Honor Program, and direct staff to develop and launch a pilot program.
And I'd be honored to second.
Thank you, sir.
Nicole, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, we will move to item J5, the resolution recognizing the Fourth Friday of September as California Native American Day. And for this, we will have a presentation staff report by Mr. Romo.
Yes, just a brief presentation. First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Lloyd White for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, sir. This is a consideration of a resolution that would recognize the Fourth Friday of September as California Native American Day. This year, it's going to be September 26th, and that may change every year. So in 1998, the state of California designated the Fourth Friday of September as California Native American Day to honor the enduring presence and sovereignty of indigenous communities throughout the state, and provide an opportunity to educate residents about native history, culture, and contemporary achievements. So several cities in Sangor Pass and Riverside County have either adopted or in the process of adopting similar resolutions. The City of Beaumont stands on the ancestral homelands of the Surrano and Cohila peoples, whose stewardship, cultures, and traditions have shaped the Sangor Pass region since before recorded history. The Morongo Band of Mission Indians, a sovereign tribal nation, continues to play a vital role in the cultural, environmental, and economic life of the Sangor Pass and Riverside County, preserving language, sacred sites, and traditions while contributing to the region's prosperity and diversity. Therefore, staff believes that this is a symbolic effort for the city's continued support to preserve native heritage and promote cultural understanding. No fiscal impact here, so we recommend the full reading of this, an adoption by title of this resolution by the City Council, recognizing the Fourth Friday of September as California Native American Day.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that presentation. And Nicole, do we have any public comment?
I have no written request. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Alright, with that, I will open it up to council discussion. Mr. White?
No, I think it's, I think originally the request from a council member on the Morongo was that we recognize the 26th. And my thought was, well, if it's always going to be the Fourth Friday of September, which it looks like that's what California has declared, that we might as well do it this way.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the recommended action.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yes.
Alrighty, that will move us right on to legislative updates and discussion.
There is none tonight.
Alrighty, great. Moving on to our economic development update. Kirk?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of things to brief you on. Pleased to say that we are almost done with the renovations for the CalBiz, or the Pass Area CalBiz building at 514 North California. The carpet installation is underway now. Will be completed by Friday or Monday of next week. And so we are in conversations with all of the tenants, and we've let them know that they'll be able to start probably moving in, probably by the end of next week, or certainly the week after that. And we're still hoping to head towards an early November-ish grand opening event of some type. We're starting to put that process together, so we'll keep you updated on that. Also, just a reminder that staff, and I believe at least Mayor Protem, will be at the ICSC Palm Springs event at the end of the month. And that's sort of a mini version of the Las Vegas convention that we went to earlier this year. But there's still good activity there and good opportunity to talk to tenants, developers. My staff is in conversations with a couple of people that we will have meetings with while they're there. I will be out on vacation, but you'll be in good hands with my team. And then, I think you're all aware that we currently advertise, the city promote on billboards in the region, including the two in Ucaipa. We just signed, are about to sign a contract to extend that to a very large billboard in Corona at the 15, 215 and 91, which is a very, very high-traffic-volume location as well. So that'll be coming probably early November is when you'll see that start, or sometimes mid-October. And that's all I have for you.
Alrighty, great. Thank you for that update. I appreciate the addition of the billboards. I have to say that we were driving down towards Redlands the other day and got to see some of the students work up on there, and it was great to see. I still really enjoy that.
Just a quick question. Do we know, I haven't seen any other cities doing this. Do you know of other cities that are promoting recruiting?
We don't have an inventory currently. I mean, I know some cities have done that over time. But as I drive throughout Southern California, I haven't seen any recently.
I'm excited, but that means now I have to drive down there and check it out.
Well, actually, and if I could add one more thing, if you don't mind, Mayor Protem. We also are putting together some advertising opportunities. Will not begin until next spring, but we will have a presence at the Lake Elsinore Storm Baseball Field and the San Bernardino 66ers Baseball Field. For very modest pricing, we're able to promote the city as a place to come and do business and to live. And we'll see how that goes. We may expand that out to other similar venues if we feel like it's worthwhile. So we will have a Beaumont night at both ballparks next year.
And then, real quick, we have a lot of flexibility with the current one here, where we can put up different ads. Would we be able to use the ads we're talking about to promote the Cherry Festival as well?
On the billboards?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Certainly, yeah.
Thank you. I mean, on the new billboards and maybe around the stadiums?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Great, we appreciate your guys' efforts in regionalizing some of this. Alrighty, we will move on to item M, the City Treasurer Report. I think we're good there. And for the city clerk?
No report this evening.
Alright. City attorney?
Nothing further for me.
And going to the city manager?
I just want to bring to your attention, the August monthly city manager report is in your packet. It is coming every second meeting of the month, and I want to thank staff for spending the time to put this stuff together. It's been, I think, a great way to communicate with the public.
Councilmember White?
A quick question. It's outstanding, thank you. What is the delivery of that? Is that just for council? Is it something we're going to put on the website? You know, what's the...
It's on the website as well as in the packet.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I'd like to echo those sentiments. I thought it was very well put together, was thoughtful. There was a special tribute to my husband, if you didn't see that in there. Got to see his face on there.
Should we, should you recuse yourself for this?
There's no money tied to that discussion, but no, great job, I think, on that. It was packed full of information. I really appreciate the work that was done on that. Alrighty, do we have any future agenda items?
Mayor Protem, I got a request. May I go? Are we good?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so it's just a further clarification or an extra information in reference to the forthcoming transit update. Could, we have transit include sources of funding and grant, you know, because that department relies heavily on grants? And then, if there are any projected grants that we expect to either get less money on or maybe in jeopardy, either from the state or federal level, that we could at least be made aware of that? Alright, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Councilmember White? And Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Alright, and Nicole, just to verify, I didn't need to close any public comments or anything, did I?
No.
Okay, very good. Alrighty, and we will move on to council reports. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. So I attended State of the City, and appreciate all the effort that went into that. It was a very, very nice event. A little less stress for all me this year, so it's nice. And so I appreciate all the effort that went into that. I also attended the RTA budget meeting, and we recommended the filing for federal and state grant applications for that. And then also attended our TNow meeting. We had a presentation from Riverside Transit Agency on tips on riding the bus. And so I wanted to share a few of those with the public. And let me get that pulled up here. So if you miss what I said, or if I go too fast, you can always go to riversidetransit.com for more information. But RTA started in 1977. They have 32 local fixed routes, 2,500 bus stops, and it covers a 2,500-square-mile service area. So basically, a bus stop for per square mile. Anyone under 18 can ride free until the end of the year. They're participating with university and college students for a ride-free program. There's Wi-Fi and charging stations on the bus. There's mobile ticketing available. There's a QR code on the bus. If you see something, say something. So they're promoting public safety with that. Other tips, try to arrive 10 minutes early. When you're there, walk towards the bus stop pole or wave to show... When you're there, walk towards the bus stop pole or wave to show that you are waiting for the bus and not just loitering, I guess. And then when you're on the bus, pull the cord or press the button for your upcoming stop. RTA uses the Go Mobile app for ticketing. You can also use Google Maps. Buses do not leave stops early, but they could arrive late due to traffic. And when viewing a schedule, make sure you are aware of weekday and weekend schedules. Don't be looking at the weekend when it's a Monday, you know? The bus stop signs have the bus stop number listed on that, so you can figure out where you're at. In reference to the fare box, they still accept cash and coin. You can do tap to pay, you can order the passes, and you can get your tickets from Go Mobile. So ride the bus and enjoy it. Thank you. That's my report for the evening.
Thank you, councilmember. And we'll move on to Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I attended the chamber breakfast. That was well-attended, as usual. Very nice to see some... It's been a while, actually, since I've been to one, so I was really appreciative to go to that. The push-in from the fire station was really interesting, and we actually got the story behind what push-in means. It wasn't just the name, but it's actually a kind of a historical tradition, so I was glad to hear that. As we heard, the youth council had their first meeting. I'll compliment Mayor on the State of the City when he comes to the next meeting. And lastly, we had an RCA workshop that we held to discuss the future of the MHSCP Plan. There are some issues with the plan that we're concerned about, so we held a workshop to talk about some of the needs that we're going to probably have to address in order for the plan to be sustainable. It was a pretty good workshop. We talked about possible plan amendments, additional funding, the Hans process, everything that goes around, making sure that the plan is implemented correctly. But at the end of the day, the board decided not to go forward with any plan amendments at this time, but rather direct to conduct a new NEXUS study and also to look at what internal controls we can improve on in order to try to get some of the results we're looking for. So I'll keep you posted on that as we go forward. Thank you.
All righty, great, thank you. And Councilmember White?
Yes, I attended the Mobility 21 Conference in Anaheim last week as a commissioner of RCTC. Some really good breakout sessions. The two that I went to, one was an update on the Olympics 2028 and the Paralympics 2028 as well. And for many who don't know, there will be no driving to the venues, so you're not allowed to drive to the venues, so the five counties are going to have to work on a good transportation plan. A number of them had visited Paris after the Paris Olympics, and we learned that Paris had originally 3,300 trains, and they increased that to 3,700 for the Olympics. Our area, Metrolink, has 130, and we may go to 170. So it's going to be quite a challenge, but they're working on reaching out to all areas of Southern California. As far as I know, there's nothing that will be in Riverside County. The equestrian event that was maybe going to Temecula is going elsewhere, and I don't... Oh, Santa Anita. It'll be at Santa Anita. The second session I had was equally interesting. It was about the future of transportation, and they had a representative from two companies that are building, that are developing driverless cars. One is Waymo, who is already using their cars in Phoenix, or I'm sorry, Arizona. And there was also a representative of a company who builds electric buses in LA County. And there was also... Boeing was there, as well as another company that was there talking about their pilotless airplanes that they're putting together. They already have them. You can go up to, we were told, you can go up to the Monterey Bay area, and there's an airport up there, and you can watch them circle the airport. And Boeing is also pretty far along in what they're doing as well. The question was, will any of this be available for the Olympics? And not likely. Possibly driverless cars, but you can't drive them to the venue. So again, they're going to work on trains and buses, and that's the direction. So it was interesting, and that's all I have to report.
All righty, great, thank you. Interesting, the future. All right, I too was able to attend the push-in ceremony. The station looks great, and the post that was done recently on social media looks absolutely fabulous, so great job with that. We also had the collaborative meeting that same day. I attended Student of the Month, State of the City, I thought was so well-done. Thank you to the staff and to the mayor, who did an incredible job. And then I took a swing at golfing on Friday, and I had a great time for Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks District for their foundation, so thanks for including me in that opportunity. All righty, other than that, I will conclude today's meeting and adjourn at 7:07.